They don't do that, there's a critical shortage of drivers and they would not be in a position to remobilize for us. Those are really the only two changes. They also added for us this year, the midday kindergarten bus run, which we didn't have in our original contract to accommodate the hybrid learning. So with that addition of the kindergarten buses, the reduction of the 20% reduction for Wednesday's costs and the elimination of 10 days, the total cost of the contract is fairly budget neutral. So, we need a motion to sign the amendment to the memo of agreement to the contract with Holmes.
I move that we sign the memorandum of agreement to the contract with WT Holmes Transportation Company, Inc. for busing.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And moving on, following on, we also need a vote on, which is the various PTO fundraisers for this year. So you'll see them listed out through June. So presumably, all these will be able to take place. I assume that we think these will all be able to get in?
Yeah, they've modified them based on safety requirements for COVID, so you can see trivia is going to be a virtual trivia night. They have made changes for the photography that they usually do for students to be held in an outside location. PTO does a tremendous amount to support the schools, to bring in enrichment programming, to fund teacher grants. They've been great partners. So, we appreciate the fundraising efforts that they undertake. There's a couple of fundraisers on this that they have already moved forward with in the transition to new PTO board. And because of the changes to our meeting format, they're bringing this to us for your consideration for the remainder of the year fundraisers at this time. I'm modeling one of the beautiful CDC masks that they did in their last fundraiser, thanks to the PTO.
That's what they asked you, it's a nice mask.
It is, and it says Norfolk, and yeah, so those are being distributed, so thanks to the PTO for that. There, you know, we support all the fundraisers that are proposed for this current year.
Okay, so just to be clear first, so this is, some of these have already taken place, we just want to get all of them, and so these are ones that have already taken place, then the ones that are to be scheduled, so I don't know if there's just any question with this?
Or proposed, they're proposed. I'm on PTO.
The only ones that have moved forward would be this Spiritware sale, their Friendship Directory, the PTO sponsorship. But the rest are pending fundraisers pending year to year.
So we'll go proposed. Anyway, so do we have a vote to accept the proposed fundraising initiatives as laid out?
I move to accept the PTO as fundraising initiatives.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So thank you to them for again doing that, very appreciative. And then I think we move on to Ingersberg's evening.
Okay, great. So the first thing that we have for tonight, we have Dot Pearl here, who is our Regional Director of Wellness. I have presented to the committee in the past that we wrote a regional grant. It was about 350,000 that funded a Director of Wellness for Norfolk, KP, Rantham, and Plainville, as well as social worker positions and some professional development funding. So Dot is here today to provide you an update of what we have done with that grant. So Dot, come on up. And she's, you have the copies of the slides in your pocket, but she will share them from there.
Welcome.
Thanks for coming.
We had a chance to take a look, let's go back a second. As you see on the front of this, the whole, is this, this is the whole school, maybe the whole child model, and sort of disposition, so it takes a look at all those factors that play into that model. And so we're working our way through all those and taking a look at all the districts across the region to see how we're doing in each of those areas to support health and learning. So just briefly, you know, obviously, as I think it said, the collaboration of the four superintendents to improve, sorry, to improve student behavioral mental health outcomes through the grant that was awarded in the spring of 2019, is really an exceptional collaboration between those superintendents to really help support the mental health and behavioral health needs of students. So I began last July, July 2019, and really took on just the goal of learning as much as I could about the districts and the towns, mapping things out in terms of what, where the districts are, in terms of those efforts, along with that model. And reaching out to town boards and services, local agencies and state agencies to talk about partnerships, to talk about ways that they could best support the students here. And really, the overarching goal of all of that was really about how to improve student behavior and mental health outcomes, and to address related barriers to student success. You know, the superintendents had sort of framed things for me that, you know, it's been really difficult for students to access and families to access some of the resources and supports. Because when the state looks at this area, they don't think that there's as much in need as there actually is, when you do some digging about the needs of families and students. So, so the first, you know, goal that I've sort of operated under is really to increase the access to tier three supports through partnerships with outside agencies, to provide school site-based counseling, and through partnership with referral agencies. So, you know, when I first came onboard, I really established relationships with outside providers in all of the towns in the region, people that were actually locally based, to learn a little bit about their agencies, what kinds of openings. Openings are rare many times, especially for children in the area. So they updated me on, you know, what health insurances they were using, taking a look at what counseling, if a counselor referred someone to their agency, how long that waitlist was going to look. So we're trying to keep the counseling teams up to date on some of those resources as we move along. And then I began working on a school site-based counseling partnership with Arbor Counseling. And that's really for kids that are high risk, that have access concerns. So as they move up the tiers of intervention, they may be referred to the adjustment counselors, the psychologists from the districts, and then they can't access services. Arbor is there so that if a family can't access the outside support, maybe it's transportation, maybe it's insurance, maybe they're on a waitlist in four different agencies, Arbor can come into play. I hope this year is that that will continue. We'll start to see more referrals to that program. They did start to work with a couple of families towards the end of the school year. A lot of the referrals from all four of the districts came in just before our closure, and the agency also closed and went to telehealth. So there was a little bit of transition time there, and they're starting to see clients both in their office and through telehealth. And as long as space is available on each of the schools, they could continue to make those referrals and have kids get that access. Some of my work is just collaboration with the family support specialists, the social worker also hired through that grant. And then I began sort of looking at, well, what referral services were out there to help support counselors in making those referrals? When counselors are spending a long time trying to make referrals to families, to counseling agencies, to check in with those families to see if anything took place, many times families will say, forget it, then I'm not going to continue to be on waitlists. So there, but while they're doing that, it's preventing them from doing other things to really give direct service to children in the schools. So we looked at the referral services to see if that could benefit the counselors in the schools. So into this year, continuing to work with those outside agencies, we revised over the summer, I met with the director at Arbor Partnerships around revising our referral process to help facilitate some movement there and better communication between the agency and the school districts. I've just, I'm in the process right now of finalizing a contract with Interface Referral Service, which is part of William James College. That will launch in January. The services most likely will not be available to families until the very beginning of February, but they'll, they do a lot of upfront work. So we'd have sort of kickoff launches with counseling teams, anyone who wants to know what those services are about, a lot of PR information. They, they start to vet out work with our counselors in our area, which I've already provided them with, the list of people that I've already made contact with, and they'll build a database. Many communities in Massachusetts use Interface Referral, have good success. So when a family calls them, they actually connect them with an agency that has an opening that takes their insurance, and they just have to call and connect. Then they follow up with that family to make sure it was a good match and that things are going. Schools have had very good success, you know, with Interface Referral, so we're hoping that's true here as well. And so one of the other pieces is really to work with the counseling teams and the schools around maybe some kind of data collection tool that we can really track risk and referral information for all the schools, so that we can do ongoing needs assessment and identify other partnerships that need, that could take place, you know, for the schools. The second big area is really around increasing the availability and awareness of the families, as well as the appropriate staff of local and state resources, supports, and programs. So I'll continue that outreach to those agencies. As part of that, Riverside Emergency Services, which is the emergency service provider for our area, I found when I started meeting with the schools, there was some concerns about the level of service that Riverside would provide in a crisis situation, or risk assessments need to be done. So they came out and met with all the mental health providers in the districts to sort of update on their services. And connecting with them this fall, they're really ramping up around helping schools and communities at the next level, really looking at wraparound and how do we help support if someone doesn't move to hospitalization or a higher level of need, how do they really help the school support that student? And it really, if we can increase that use, it impacts families that they don't have to drive to Norwood to their office and not, and wait because all the crisis team is out in mobile crisis calls. They don't have to go to an emergency room and sit in a waiting room, an emergency room, waiting for a risk assessment by a professional. Curation of resources for parents and students during coronavirus, put together some supports that went out to the districts, as well as during all the incidences around George Floyd and the other race-related events. Resources for families to have conversations at home with their children, or to access other resources that would be helpful to them. We did a summer resources update, which included, you know, access to different food sources, access if you lost your job, how do you help pay for your utilities, all of those kinds of services. And then this fall, put together a family resource guide. I don't know if you want me to show that for briefly?
It's on our website, I think most of you probably have seen it.
Sure, so we'll continue to update and change that and based on changes in services as we move forward. A lot of the supports in there are things that are in place now during the pandemic. Part of increasing the awareness of families is really around parent wellness education. Last spring, those are the programs that we ran. The last two, we moved to a virtual presentation for the, for the parents because of the closures. And both speakers in those situations really adapted their presentations to the situation of now parents having their kids at home and what that was going to look like. We did a partnership with Hockam-McGuire for Summer Meals Program. After the school food services finished serving their remote meals at the end of the school year, Hockam-Mc picked it up, we did it out of the KP High School bus loop, and families came and picked up meals, breakfast and lunch, three times a week throughout the summer. And actually, they extended it right until the 14th of September this year. Actually, I just connected and partnered with them again for KP, when their food service people were out on quarantine, to help provide foods during that time. One of my goals this year is really to develop a regional parent education committee that will plan a series of parent wellness events throughout the year. You'll see that, and many towns are doing that now, some in conjunction with their other coalitions. But oftentimes, every school's parent groups, CPAC, all of those groups are working on all kinds of programming, overlapping dates, you know, spending funds in duplicates. So hopefully, that will be something that can help increase also the access to all the families in the district to learn about the information that they need to help support their students at home. Grants is something that, you know, embed throughout the work that I'm doing, continuing to research the grants that might be available that would support the sustainability of any of the wellness initiatives that the districts have in place now and that we've continued to move on. And also, really taking a look at what the wellness focus is in the districts and how those grants might support those. The grants listed at the top are the grants that we received this year. The third one down, the DESI Supporting Students Behavioral Mental Health and Wellness Grant, is the second year of the grant that the superintendents received last year. We didn't get as much money as they did the first time around, but still enough money to continue some of the things that we started. Disposition, the social workers, and some other things. Part of the Interface Services will come out of that for this school year as well.
I just wanted to jump in and say that I'm being very modest here, which is, these are grants we received. These are grants she can research, pursue, and acquire. So that's hundreds of thousands of dollars that have come in for mental health, parent programs, summer curriculum work that our staff did around RTI interventions. So she's worked really hard on this.
Thank you. It's a...
If you don't mind me interrupting, when did you start the grant request process? I don't know if that's the right terminology, but when, like all this seems very timely given what we're going through now. Like Nostradamus liked to realize that we needed this a year ago? I mean, how's, how, how far back does this go, where you initially put these requests in?
Yeah, so when I came onboard in July, that, that was part of my summer work that first summer, is really identifying grants and sort of mapping out, okay, when is there a grant application process that opens, and then really just want, watching?
July 19?
Yes.
Okay.
And starting to watch, you know, what's out there. And really, you know, the, after doing an assessment of sort of the wellness and where we're at in all the districts, sort of identifying what are some areas that we really need to pay attention to, and also that the superintendents really provided me with that information from the beginning, really talking about, you know, mental health, wellness in general, behavioral health, all of those things that families needed some supports in, and the schools could increase programming in as well. So taking a look at, you know, watching the DESI sites, watching SAMSA, some of the US Gov's grant sites. The bottom three from the DESI one down, those are all from the Department of Ed. The Systems for Student Success Grant had a number of priorities, but it, they awarded them just about the week that we closed, everybody closed. So getting any work done in that time was really difficult because teachers were just trying to learn how to teach, then at that point, in a new way. So that's, we switched that to the summer and did, we had a good team from each districts taking a course in MTSS. And their, the second continuation of that grant will enable, not as many of the priorities to be attacked as we thought, but just it will enable some of the work to continue on the MTSS, RTI process in each of the districts by their district team. The last two that are pending, the Save and Support of Schools grant, Plainville decided to move forward with one of their priorities on that, so I helped them complete that grant, and then worked with Healthy KP for the CDC Drug-Free Communities Grant. That was a grant that was due back in June, originally March, they moved it to June with COVID, and we will, they'll hear about that in December. It's a long wait period.
Yeah, they've been laying a lot of funds in grants.
Yeah, and that's...
That's a fairly substantial grant, too, that's...
Yeah, it's about 500,000 over five years, yeah, it's a big grant. And Healthy KP, you know, that's one of their, they want to have some funds to be able to extend some prevention efforts. So I'll continue sort of searching. The grants are, the grants are interesting, the DESI ones aren't too bad to apply to, but the federal ones, as some of you may know, are quite the challenge. Just, yeah, when I first started meeting with all the districts, I heard all over in each district, you know, that employees really needed support around their own wellness. And as we know, you know, to be able to do a good job and deliver every day to students and be in front of students with the best energy, staff needs to be well. I heard a lot about stresses, I talked to the people throughout the districts, I did a survey to address their needs and interests and things that people were interested in. Here in Norfolk, I partnered with Roxanne Bordeaux and the Maya representative to look at what we could offer in Rantham, I'm sorry, Rantham, in Norfolk. The other districts were a little bit different based on what their health insurance programs were, but Maya is great, has a ton of offerings, and she put together some things. We had a couple of things that were supposed to kick off right around the closure, the whole, this kind of discouraging, that closure came when it did. And then we curated resources for employee wellness during COVID and provided that to staff. Because they were really struggling, I think, in terms of their own self-care and the stress levels and trying to manage. Just being able to find time to do those things is part of the struggle that I hear now from some of the staff, to take care of themselves as well. And so this year, we did do an employee wellness guide that listed all of the resources for them, both around mental health as well as, you know, physical health, and also around topics that would help them improve their personal and professional strength around grief and loss, trauma, all of those pieces. COVID testing, Norfolk and KP reached out around doing COVID testing in September. Norfolk did it first because you had your staff back first, I think it went pretty well, I think we had about 95 people approximately tested in Norfolk.
It's supposed to 100.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll test, we're testing again the Monday after Thanksgiving break in Norfolk and KP again, through a clinic in both districts.
How long did the test results take to come back?
Usually about 24 to 48 hours when we do the onset local testing, and we're intentionally doing it the Monday after Thanksgiving in case anybody has traveled. We want to expedite people's access to testing and results being returned because of forms and performance, and because of holiday gatherings.
No, I, yeah, no, I understand that.
And we have over 100 registered for that.
Yeah, it's moving quick. Yeah, and they're, you know, they're coming for a chunk of time in the morning, and every, I think almost every appointment's taken at this point. And we'll expand that if we need to, and depending on the team that they send out to us.
Is the team from this, this is a private lab, right, correct? Because I, okay.
Yeah. It's Cataldo Ambulance Pro EMS, but they send their tests to the Broad Institute, which is affiliated with MIT and Harvard.
Right. No, I had just read on the news that Westwood was having trouble getting from the state a mobile site. So I was like, oh, that's interesting, but we're private, so that's why we have it, okay.
Yeah, so the state has recently implemented and is offering rapid mobile testing units, and that they will send out to schools that are struggling with high transmission or an emergency situation. Those are harder. We have scheduled this in private, and we're using, we have used funding from the CARES Grant through the town and through the schools to offset the cost of those COVID surveillance testing.
Got it, thank you.
Would this also, are we looking to do this potentially after whatever, on winter breakdown this time? Because you may have, again, that's a time of family gathering. I know some of it, they'd be out for a period of time, so that probably helps to some degree. Is that also like a consideration, or?
We haven't scheduled any testing for January, but it's something that we will probably be considering as we return back. And sort of, we just booked the Thanksgiving one, and...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, we're kind of monitoring the situation at the state level, too.
Yeah, they were so busy, Cataldo, they weren't sure they could accommodate us the day after Thanksgiving, but they had two districts who went into closure for the rest of the year, and they said, we can do you now, so like, great. So, and we also, in the employee wellness guide, I listed a lot of other COVID testing opportunities for people if they needed to test, you know, in a time that we weren't doing the testing.
And we brought a program, too, so there's, through Maya, there's meditation early morning once a week and once in the evening. There are some virtual classes, health classes, yoga, that is offered through this group. Also, we heard feedback from teachers that they were looking for support groups, people to talk to about supporting students in responding to trauma or returning to school. So there's a bunch of different support groups that have been coordinated with local providers, local counselors that are running them, that teachers have access to. So it's, it's been a process.
Yeah.
And that did a great job on that.
The last two of those is, those of those, the yoga company and Transitions Counseling have been phenomenal at really wanting to give back and to be able to help the community. They, I know Transition Counseling keeps calling, they say, try to get more people to apply, you know, register for the support group, because it's been really helpful, so.
And they're doing that in no constitution.
Yes, yes, they've been really phenomenal. And just, these are just other areas, I didn't go into these too thoroughly, but these are other areas of focus during this year. I did convene a homework study committee based on sort of looking at the homework as relates to wellness and well-being and how we are. The team was great through all the districts, and then we closed around the time we talked about doing some focus groups with families around, and teachers around those pieces. So, you know, we need to determine, you know, next steps on that. I think at the time, it was, when I reached out to them, of course, everybody was doing homework, you know, so.
But the end goal of that committee is to have recommendations and guidelines consistent across the elementary baskets and districts, and as with the PT around expectations for homework, so they did a lot of research on how it's practice and effective in homework that we can do.
The MTSS, we already spoke about, about the summer, and hopefully that will continue the implementation efforts. Looking at suicide prevention protocols with the districts, and we've added sort of to that sort of suicide prevention protocols and risk assessments when students are home and when they're on remote, or when they're in, you know, they're not in school that day and they read themselves. So we're taking a look at that, making sure that we have all of those measures in place. And the districts are all doing something a little bit different with those, so we're trying to sort of meeting with them and pulling them together to see if we could sort of have a consistent piece. Social emotional learning is, you know, a big interest of mine, and, you know, I think Norfolk has done great work around social emotional learning and putting the second step curriculum and all of those pieces, the work that the adjustment counselors are doing. Not every district is doing the same thing, so we're taking a look at, well, it's okay to not do the same thing, but what competencies are all kids getting? So that when they're coming from the three districts and moving into the middle school, they all have the common language and common competencies that must have had some attention during, during their years. So I'm hoping to work a little bit more closely with the people that sort of move the social emotional learning in each district to see how we can pull all of those together. Health and physical education, it's with the last year, I would say, I'd hope to do sort of, as part of the grant we had written in for extending sort of a review of that curriculum throughout. I will still try to work on some of that as well this year without that, the grant piece, to really get a sense of where we're teaching health, where we're not, and what kinds of continuum of health we can be working on each year. And really looking at, you know, what programs are evidence-based and what that data looks like around the work that's being delivered there. Any questions?
Dot, I just want to say, thank you for your hard work. I mean, this is, this is, I work in a middle school, and, and so, this is critical. I can't even tell you this year, my school psychologist and adjustment counselors, they're, they're overwhelmed, and they said, actually, a lot of it this year is parents. So that, to have the wraparound services for parents is, is critical, because, you know, how, you know what it's like in a family, it gets past, you know, you, it sets the tone in the house, and it just... So, thank you, it's, it's critical, and I, I hope, I can't remember how long this grant lasts, or what the plan is, we better keep her around because we are, we can't, we can't teach without, you know, if someone's not mentally well.
It was a one-year grant, and we wrote a second year, or Dot wrote an extension, so we have it through this year. Hopefully, the state will continue to support our program. This is a DESI grant, state funds.
It's extremely well-needed.
And we had a critical, critical need in Norfolk for access to that mental health counseling services and crisis services. We were really concerned where the community doesn't have a hospital, and, you know, we're referring kids to Norwood Hospital. When families are in crisis, they go to Norwood Hospital, and we have recommendations for city counseling. There is a six to eight month waitlist, so we really want, that was a focus that we had to bring, school-based counseling, and make that available for families who needed it, access and better leverage community partners to meet that need that we can prioritize for students in Norfolk, Norfolk schools. So she's done a great job of that.
And I'm assuming, I'm assuming you send the list out to, how do the counselors access the list of outside therapists?
The outside therapist list, I give to them the whole list based on, you know, the different areas, whether they're private, whether it's part of a public agency.
Perfect.
Whether it's, they also have lists of like support groups for families, you know, grandparents raising grandchildren, or support groups for LGBTQ youth, or all of those. You know, I always recommend to them not to give sort of the counseling list of outside providers out to a family because it's just so overwhelming.
Yes.
You know, and they, it's hard to navigate. But if they can look at it and say, okay, I know there's a, someone who sees children between this age group with these particular areas and this insurance, it helps them to cut through it. But hopefully, Interface will help replace some of that time that they spend sort of negotiating with families around where to go.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions for that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the grant work is impressive.
Dot's everywhere.
You're stating how complicated some of these federal grants are.
I do a lot of federal grant work, I don't know how you did that many in a short amount of time, so, thank you.
Some of them were too bad. I don't know if I can shut that off or not.
We will jump on to, again, for school community policy, the school committee is responsible for everything, all fundraising activities through the schools. So you approve the PTO fundraising. Additionally, each building does some fundraising activities, of course, the school here. They're fairly traditional, there's nothing in here that we haven't done for a number of years to really highlight, although the form, some of these activities are obviously given to the public. So, Freeman, there's a lot of fundraising for sixth grade promotion activities. They've listed some of the things they've done in the past, they do collections, season giving for the Santa Foundation, usually November to December. We do a fundraiser for Read Across America, the F Fund Scholarship, scholarship for KP students.
KP graduated seniors.
For KP graduate seniors, that's run by the NTA, Jethro Hardin, and Sonya are other fundraisers that we have done in the past. Oh, oh, sorry.
So not only do I have a mask, but I'm not near the microphone, sorry. And then HOD does a food drive for the food pantry, again, holiday sharing and caring. Read Across America, they do a rally against cancer on opening day at Fenway Park, hopefully we will see that happen. They are establishing a memorial for Gretchen Sullivan to fundraise, to contribute, again, to math or other kind of curriculum initiatives. And Jump Rope for Heart in May. They do have new members on the school council and typically they do one unique fundraiser each year that aligns with their school goals. But they, they have new members and they haven't identified that yet at this point. So we need a motion to approve the school-based fundraisers, unless anyone has further questions on that.
So do we have a motion to approve those fundraisers as described?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I can't wait to conduct Jump Rope for Heart in my dining room.
Yes, that will be an interesting.
Maybe a driveway would be better.
The next thing in your packet is just the quarterly report from BIKO. Again, BIKO is the collaborative that we belong to in Norfolk that provides programming for students with unique special educational needs. We, our members of BIKO have been for, oh, probably fifteen years, for a long time. We have a new director, a new executive director that was hired for, to operate BIKO this year, Jeanne Sullivan. She was a prior special education director in the Norton Public Schools and started on July one. They have reopened for their students with COVID, obviously COVID modifications. They do have some students that are learning remotely, it's a small number that are fully remote for BIKO. Most of the students in their programs are back to either full in-person or hybrid model. They started the year with two hundred and twelve students, which is about typical. They budget for an average of two twenty, but they pick up referrals throughout the school year, so the budget is healthy. Implementing a new social, a new science curriculum for students in nine to twelve. And the executive director, as I said, just started in July and is in the process of doing an entry plan and evaluating the needs of the collaborative. I expect we'll have a report probably December, January on that. All right, the next thing I have for tonight that I want to highlight, it's, the full report is in your packet. But as per our presentation over the summer, when the committee approved the reopening plans, we said that after six to eight weeks, we would send out a survey, gather feedback and information from our staff on how things were going, how students' learning was progressing. Any needs or challenges that they saw, as well as from parents in the community to see what was working for families at home. So this is just a summary of the survey results, I'll just highlight a few things. We did ask about communication, obviously the district at this time has a lot of information, we know we're sending home for parents, so we don't want to be flooding people, but there's a lot of information we have to communicate. So we asked for feedback on that. The vast majority of parents felt that the volume of communication from the superintendent's office and from the building principal's office was just right. Shocking to many of you, I'm sure. About fifteen percent in both felt that it was too much and a small percent felt too little. There were suggestions and I am working on this, making, doing the best that we can to streamline communication, keep communication brief and put links in for people who want more information. Because it's a fine balance, some people want to know all of it and know all the details and other people just want to know the bullets. So we're, we're modifying our platform a little bit to streamline that. We asked parents about how clear they were about the academic expectations for their child for this year. About fifty percent of parents felt that they really understood between, agree and strongly, you agree, it's about sixty-two percent. We have about twenty-one percent of our parents that were neutral and about twelve percent of our parents that were disagreed and felt that they weren't clear on the academic expectations. A lot of comments around that have to do, or where people said they were unclear, people are trying to process and understand better how the closure impacted this year's curriculum. How are we teaching skills that kids may have lost? So that's good information to us that we may have to communicate a little more clearly around that and provide some additional resources. The, we asked people about how they were doing with logging into the live S E L lessons. The vast majority of our parents found that they are usually able to log in without any difficulty. Again, in the narrative comments, some people reported that it's hard to help their younger students work, log in first thing in the morning. Sometimes people have some technical challenges with that, but most felt that kids really looked forward to connecting with their teachers and peers. We asked just to kind of gauge how people felt about their, the information they had about school-based protocols. Most people strongly felt that they had a clear understanding of the health and safety guidelines that we have in place. Still, the majority felt that they had a strong understanding of how the school, actions schools would take if there was a positive case. About a hundred and eighty parents didn't feel that they, they really had clear understanding of that. So it is all published in our plan, I put it in last Wednesday's words for parents and a link to that. But I think as cases are increasing across the state, people are attending to that with a different level of focus than they did when we first presented the plan back in August.
And I feel like it's always changing, that what, what is considered close contact, I mean, I.
That's changed.
You know, so I just, I don't know.
Yeah, the, the definition of close contact was to be within six feet of an individual for fifteen minutes or more. And now that's expanded to fifteen minutes over a twenty-four hour period. So I'm sure that is probably contributing. The protocols for how we respond haven't changed, you know, if it's a school-based situation where a child becomes symptomatic, they would have to be isolated. We would have to do the contract tracing. So those protocols are all published online, but we'll do, I may consider doing another town hall session for parents in, in December, early January as a question and answer if people have further.
People are more concerned about if there's a positive or more case in the school, like, do I find out? Not the name.
Yep, I'm going to speak to that tonight, so, that is something that, that people are wondering about, so I'll speak to that in a minute.
Just, there's a point in here, and I know we're stopping you mid-presentation, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right.
Jen started it, but the, there's the thing on, on the bottom of this, themes reported in comments for question five, where it says, reported confusion about safety protocols and procedures, and then there's a couple of examples. This top one, which is exact process that will be followed if a child is quarantined and awaiting results, I mean, my understanding is that child stays home.
They should be home.
That's exactly right.
They stay home.
Yep, if a child is quarantined and in awaiting results, they stay home. Yep, but you know what, I think that that question was really more about what did they do for their learning while they're home? So, and we're working on, on some plans around that, but yes, they do stay home. Let's see, about fifty percent of parents indicated that they haven't really needed the support from the district website for looking for additional resources, but those that do, about thirty-three percent are using it to, to follow instructional videos and get support. We went to get feedback specific to each learning model, so we wanted to hear from parents of hybrid students and parents of remote students, how things were going. The general themes, and I would have to say, these really come across clearly in the student comments in the morning check-in when they're rating their day. Kids are thrilled to be back in school. I mean, we see so many, I'm so happy to be here, I'm excited about school, I'm excited to see my friends. Ninety percent of our parents reported that kids are really enjoying the in-person learning, which is a tribute to the incredibly hard work that our teachers have done to, to make an unusual situation feel comfortable and normal for kids. The parents report that kids are able to complete their homework after in-person learning days, that's not, we are not giving a homework at all grade levels, but some students at the upper grades go home with an assignment after in-person learning. Kids are very successful with that. About fifty percent of parents indicated that their, it's forty-six percent, indicated their kids are engaged during remote learning days. Twenty-seven percent were neutral and about twenty-six percent were disagreed with that. That's definitely a theme that we've heard, is that it's harder for kids during the days that they are fully remote to stay on task and get assignments completed. But again, most parents feel that there's a good balance between paper and pencil assignments versus computer assignments, fifty-five percent strongly support that. About thirty percent are neutral, only a small number were concerned about that. Again, the themes that came through in the narrative were that parents definitely reported children, they thought children are best on remote days when they had paper and pencils assignments to supplement any videos or online instruction they're working. And they really responded well to the pre-recorded lessons that teachers have been providing. At age all the day, we broke it up because we were wondering if the comments would really be different by building an age level. They're really not, there's really significant overlap. Again, kids are very happy about attending school, seeing their friends, learning packets on the remote days are well-balanced. Teachers are very supportive, answer questions that families have, provide accommodations and enrichment during learning days, there's great lines of communication. Very impressed with the teacher-recorded videos. Some parents reported they liked the opportunity for individualized attention that the small hybrid cohorts provide. We have eight or nine kids in some classes. Parents report they liked engaging with specialists during long live lessons and they preferred that now that we are all using Google Classroom, found that easier to navigate. Let's see, again, great, a significant overlap with what we heard from Primm and Kennedy parents. Although at the upper grades, parents reported it was hard reminding kids to log into live specials, managing that special schedule can be challenging. Let's see, again, the themes are fairly over, you can read through them. As far as remote learning, and that was about ten point five percent of the overall respondents, we had about sixty percent of parents respond. So we had five hundred and ninety-three responses out of about a thousand students, so that was a good return rate. Ten percent of those were remote learning only, we have a hundred and seven students that are enrolled in remote. Very positive comments again about the remote platform. The kids are, seventy-five percent said their kids are really engaged during remote learning days, that the workload is manageable. Again, that they're satisfied with the balance of paper and pencil versus computer assignments. Sixty-six percent felt that their, their child still feels like a member of the school community even when they're learning remotely. That was positive, twenty percent were neutral on that. And eighty-seven percent reported that they were getting sufficient support for technology and that's devices and tech help to support the remote learning. Again, a lot of positive feedback on the paper pencil assignments students are using to reinforce learning. Let's see. Comments on the remote model, parents love the live lessons. Even the younger parents are saying that as kids get further into the year, they're increasing their independence with assignments and logging in. They really report that they were happy that the curriculum aligned and that kids in the remote were on pace and, and studying the same content that students that were engaged in hybrid learning. Again, some challenges, we're keeping track of the specialist schedule, which has been pretty much universal, parents are struggling with.
It's not just me.
It's not just you.
It was very cryptic, it was really, you had to dissect it a bit.
Yeah, we're going to be looking at that and I'll talk about sort of how we're responding, but that is a, a theme that's come across. Again, loving the live lessons, that kids are learning how to independently manage the technology. The challenges of the remote learning are not surprising, we're hearing parents are worried about social opportunities for students that are not, because so many of our kids are also not engaging in sports or anything else right now for, for various family reasons. So that was a concern. And the amount of support sometimes younger kids need for logging in and accessing instruction when parents are balancing other work demands. So I don't think there was anything that was really surprising in the survey. You know, we have heard some informal feedback. We will be taking a look at these results, working with the teachers association, looking at staff survey results and making some recommendations for, for adjustments to our model. And I'm going to speak to that in just a minute, but before we get there, are there any questions about the survey results? Oh, I would say, we left an open comment section at the end of the survey. Many, many, many parents shared more narrative comments, it was very helpful. Of all of the comments, again, we had five hundred and ninety-three parents respond, only about ten percent of those respondents commented on an interest in returning to full live in-person learning. So it was about fifty parents, fifty comments on that.
Will this be published on the district website? I apologize if you said that and I missed it.
Yeah, it's already, if people look under the school committee packet, but yes, we want to share it out with our staff first and have a chance to talk with, with teachers about the, you know, and get their insight into, you know, if that's comments are consistent with what they're hearing and what they're seeing in the classroom. And after that, once we've shared it with teachers, we will make it available.
You had a sixty percent response rate, and I know we had done other surveys prior to school beginning.
Yeah.
That percentage was eighty-something previously?
When we were first doing some surveys in the spring about remote learning and hybrid learning, we had a very high response rate. It was probably eight hundred and ninety parents. I think people were really anxious about, at that time, about what school was going to look like, how long we were going to be closed, so we had a very high engagement rate. So this is slightly lower than that.
What'd you say the percentage was?
It was about, it was about, we had about eight hundred and fifty respondents at that time, so it'd be about eighty-five percent because we have about a thousand students. So it was higher than this.
I guess my question is, that's a pretty significant sample that's missing, so I don't know if there's, I don't know what you could do with it because it's not there, but that is something like, why, why weren't people able to answer?
You're using the same delivery method.
I didn't, I didn't respond.
I mean, if it's going up to the same universe.
Yeah, I mean, this is higher than most surveys, when we send out curriculum surveys and, and other surveys, we get about thirty-three percent on a good day.
I guess what I'm getting to is if there's a, I know the percentage was pretty high in the beginning as far as not too much email or too much, did that in itself, the silence indicate, I'm getting too much stuff, I just simply didn't get to this. Like, we'll call this person Jen Nguyen, was unable to answer.
The anonymous Jen Nguyen. How long do parents have to respond once they got the link?
We put it out, it was about, over a week, over a week, and we did send reminders.
Listen, I mean, I'm the first delinquent to raise my hand and say that I forgot about school, like, I mean, it's just, I didn't, I don't remember the stuff that comes in.
I didn't forget, I'm just in a different mindset than everybody.
No, but I know, but you had enough, there was enough time, there was a sufficient amount of time to provide a response.
Always respond, we usually hear from people that have concerns and so we did, we did send reminders and, and it was out for a week, so.
I, I guess I just caution one way or the other, not to, like, even, good, bad, indifferent.
Yeah.
That's still a, a significant sample size, it's missing, that's maybe concerning, maybe not, I don't know, because we have, we're just left to draw our own conclusions as to why, and it could be, hey, I just couldn't get to it, I have stuff going on, that's perfectly valid, everybody's got stuff going on, so that's fine, but I'm just saying that.
It isn't what we saw in the spring, where we were having, you know, eighty percent. What I would say with this survey is the, the six, sixty percent is a good statistically valid survey.
It's a huge sample, I'm not just reading that.
And, and the positive thing with this is that the distribution of parents across the age, there was a good representation of every grade, but it's almost equally divided in terms of response rate. So we do have representation and good feedback from all grade levels.
And Madora and I were definitely publicizing back in the spring, like, fill it out, so I, I mean, we were telling people, fill it out.
Hey, listen, you asked me what happened last week, I'm with you.
So Thomas, we'll, we'll make sure we get on that, okay?
That sounds like the right thing to do.
Remind people.
My other question would be, I guess others, districts have done similar things to this. Where do these numbers stand in respect to those other districts, are we?
It's, it's hard to compare because other districts have done surveys and we, we aligned a lot of our questions to other districts, but they all have different models. And so the feedback they're getting, like, we have Franklin Public Schools, they've delayed, they're not reopened yet, so.
I didn't know if there was a, you could look at the other districts the same as us.
Similar to Rentham and, our, our models are similar to most elementary districts in this region.
Okay.
But the, the survey results, you know, they, they vary by district. I don't think Rentham's done a recent one, I'd have to check.
They, they did do one.
Did they do, Rentham did, not K P, Rentham?
Rentham, yep.
Okay, so I'd have to check, I'm not sure how this aligns.
I'd just be curious, because I mean, the numbers look very good overall, I mean, but is it, is that the same everyone else is getting, is everybody doing better, you know, just be nice to see what, how they stack up as comparison to everyone else.
Yep, I could, I could gather some comparison data. I would say, I do join a monthly regional call with twenty area superintendents that are all in this area, and I would say that what they're reporting in terms of feedback is similar. That they're, that kids are really happy to be back in school, that parents and families are struggling a little bit with remote learning and districts are looking for different ways to support those remote learners. So I think those themes are probably consistent among most districts, but I, I haven't compared the general results, so I could gather some comparison data.
Thank you.
Sure. All right.
If I could, from a communication standpoint, not a survey, I'm not asking for another survey, but I know, and it just, just popped into my head because I got an email about it. I know report cards are going to come out and conferences are going to happen.
Yep.
And it's going to be different this year and the whole model of school has been different this year and, you know, I'm, I'm sort of waking up every morning and, at least with my older child, taking it on faith that things that are happening, you know, that are supposed to be happening are happening and all this good stuff, and it seems to be going that way. Is there some way to communicate to parents kind of if expectations are different, like, just what that process is going to be, like, if you've been through it before, how is it going to be different? You know, are we using the same measuring metrics for kids that we've used in the past, just so you can sort of?
It's a, it's a great question, and you always ask me right as we're preparing communication to go out, so tomorrow, tomorrow, when you get the Wednesday word. We're, we are using the same report card instruments and, and there's information in the parent letter going out tomorrow about the timeline for when students will be bringing hard copies home of their report cards. We also will not be, because we are just, we rolled out special subject instructions. We also will not be, because we are just, we rolled out special subject instruction later, so art, music and wellness. We didn't start immediately at the beginning of the year and then we started with asynchronous lessons. So we will not be evaluating student performance in those subjects on the first term marking report card. But we are also going to send out a letter with parents with the report card that explains the marking system and any changes for this current year.
And it's still the, we do the numbers, right? The one, two, the?
Yep.
I know there's a name for it. I'm, standard space, something like.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
You heard of it?
I remembered. It's from last year, I'm good.
So I just wanted to share some comments based on the survey. We have spent some time as our administrative team looking at the results. There are some things that we are working on in response to, as an immediate response and some things that we had underway that will address some of the concerns that parents shared. As I mentioned to the committee, I believe at our last meeting, we have advertised and we're in the process of trying to hire a remote learning teacher that would exclusively be available to provide support and instruction to students in the hybrid model on their remote learning days. So as you know, hiring, there's a shortage of teachers right now, there's a shortage of subs. We've been really aggressively recruiting for that. We hope to have that position filled soon. And that would be able to, that teacher would be able to provide some teaching, reteaching, assistance, office hour, kind of support to students on their remote learning days. The direct, the other thing that we are looking at right now is increasing the number of students that we're bringing in for more in-person learning. And that's for students with significant, uh, significant sorts of needs. So our English language learners that are non-English speakers, we have our level one students in for full in-person learning now. We have students that are just about between a level one and level two. We're considering expanding in-person learning for that population of students. We are also looking at bringing back for more in-person learning, an additional tier of students that are receiving substantial special education services. And the special education director has been working with staff at looking, uh, at looking at criteria for that, who would be eligible for additional in-person learning. It's based on the volume of services students receive as well as data on how they're responding to remote learning right now and whether they're making progress towards their IEP goals. We have sent out a survey, I believe it went out today, to parents that, whose students might be eligible for increased in-person learning time to see if they are interested in that. And we expect to transition more students back probably the week after Thanksgiving for that. Other things that we're doing, we are working, we will be working with the Norfolk Teachers Association to take a look at how we might be able to provide some more live instruction on remote learning days. Our teachers up at the upper levels have been interested in trying to pilot some live mini lessons. We are not considering live streaming. And I just want to define how that's different than live instruction. So some districts are doing live streaming. Live streaming just means there's a camera in the classroom that is broadcasting what's happening. So the teacher is teaching the students in front of them and people are watching instruction from the outside. That's live streaming. And the research is really clear that live streaming does not lead to positive learning outcomes, especially for younger students, because it leads to passive learning, they're not engaged in the dialogue. That is not something that we are considering. But we are looking at increasing live instruction. Live instruction would be a mini lesson, a short lesson where the teacher is providing direct instruction through the virtual platform to students in person and at home. Our upper grade teachers are interested in, in looking at that. We are going to be looking at, you know, what subjects, what subjects that might make sense for, how that would be structured. We do know that our older students are more successful in a full class live lesson than our younger students are. So what that might look like would look very different across the grade spans. We're not really sure how effective that would be with our younger students, so we're looking at different possibilities. We are also continuing to actively monitor the research in the COVID case counts, both locally and at the state level. We are talking about what would need to be in place in order for the district to consider a full return to in-person learning. I know that people are probably aware that the governor made an announcement on Friday last week and the announcement was really saying that districts that are able to meet the safety standards and health guidelines should consider bringing students back for more in-person learning or a full return. Unfortunately, in Norfolk, that, it is impossible for us to do that and meet the safety guidelines. There's a couple of things that I want to point out for that. First of all, sorry, it's hot, this mask on, talking for so long. The, the, there's a couple of different things. One is the amount of social distancing we provide. So as I presented back in August, the CDC, World Health Organization, Harvard Public School of Health, the Aribala Project, Ariadne Labs, all are committed to six foot of, six feet of social distancing being critical in preventing the spread or transmission of the disease, even when people are wearing masks. The Department of Education gave districts some leeway and said you could go anywhere from three to six feet. However, they said they strongly encourage districts to strive for six feet and they require six feet of distancing for mask breaks, snack and lunch. So when we looked at that originally, we can't, we can't, we can't fit students in the class with six feet of distancing. Even if we went with a lower standard and looked at three to four feet in the classroom, we cannot accommodate all those students for lunch and snack breaks. The Freeman Kennedy Cafeteria, if you implement the required guidelines, six feet of distancing, all students at a table facing the same direction, we can fit 38 students in the cafeteria. That's using the full space, which would mean for a single lunch, we would have to have half the kids in the classroom, 38 kids in the cafeteria and use the gym just for one lunch. After that, we would have to sanitize and clean all of those spaces, which takes 20 to 30 minutes for them to be cleaned and dried and then start a second lunch, which means that every available space in the building would be being used all day to serve the, to serve the lunch. We have grade levels with 150 kids in them.
Would you even have the staff to monitor that?
We would have to hire staff to monitor those multiple settings.
I don't know, 9:15, you'd be starting lunch.
Asking, I mean, you're getting mask overdue with all the talk I have to do with this?
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure because I think the community was.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anyone's even remotely, I haven't heard anyone even suggesting it's a possibility, right?
I've heard rumblings that people would like to hear this discussed and explain why it's not possible. I would like to, as a footnote and to all of our adoring fans on YouTube, we will put a pin in this and talk about it when we're not in the middle of a public health crisis. We were going to have a challenge fitting the students in normally at the HLL day school without a public health crisis going on. There was already a space shortage.
And there will be one at Freeman.
There will still be one when we come back from this. It's still happening, but there's no, you can't.
So it's a physical impossibility.
Like, even at three feet, we're not, there's not a bunch of unused space, or like, six feet, there's not a bunch of unused space in the school. Like, there's just, there's not enough room and you can't bust them.
And for us for mask breaks with the younger kids, we actually have, they have to be supervised. You have to take your whole class. Like, at the high school, kids can go out by themselves and take a mask break, go to the bathroom. With us, we, we have to do that as a class, so we don't have space for that. And the other issue, because I do think there's increasing interest in this after the governor's statement, based on emails I've received and I think you'll hear, the other big block for us is transportation. So we would have to double our buses. Our buses are at capacity and that's 14 buses, so you'd have to double the runs, which is about 300,000 for the remaining balance of the year. But it would also mean two start times, two dismissal times. It's taking about 20 minutes now for half the parents to get through the drop off and dismissal line, so increasing parent traffic is not a great option.
Well, and I think if, if someone does have concerns about this, I know it was discussed back in August and, you know, I personally benefit from having been on the reopening committee, so I know this was discussed a lot in those meetings too, but, you know, it's just, it's just not a, you would spend the entirety of the day, every adult in the building would be moving children, shuttling children and cleaning surfaces. There would be no education going on, which I think was the, I mean, it was, there would be no, you would, nobody would be being taught anything, because you would be, you would be washing your hands, being taken to or from a car and, you know, being, having, you know, kind of playing outside, I guess, while every surface in the building was wiped down between, you know, so many children coming in and coming out. Like, there was gonna be no time for education. It would defeat the purpose of a full return.
And I think the concerns we would have with this, again, in response to the governor's statement, is we're also heading into a spike. You know, we're seeing an increase and, and just so the community's not overly concerned, Norfolk is in the red right now with 84 new cases in the last 14 days. The majority of those are at the Norfolk prison. There is an increase in community and transmission, we're aware of cases in the community, but the, the majority of those new cases are, are located and isolated at the Norfolk prison. But given that, we're heading into times that public health officials in Massachusetts are concerned we'll see a significant spike after the holidays. All of those are things that would make it really difficult for us to even consider implementing something like, like that at this point.
Ingrid, I can just only speak from my own experience in my own school. I'm concerned about having enough staff if a few people had to be out for an extended period of time due to COVID. At least I know at our last meeting, we talked about, and I know I've received emails as a parent, the desperate need for subs.
Yep.
Desperate. And I'm very concerned that if we did push everybody together and there was a spike and you had two or three teachers that had to be out for, God forbid, you know, or even on the best case, nothing really happened to them with COVID, they just had to be out, would there be enough staff? That is my fear. And then nobody goes back for an extended period of time. We're all remote if there's not enough staff to open schools.
Right.
So there's a whole house of cards here that I just hope the public, I understand everyone's, I get it as a parent, but as a teacher too and as an administrator, I guess here somewhat, we have to really look as, you know, we are together. It's not an I, it's not a me, it's not a you, it's a we. And we have to work together and realize that there are a lot of moving parts here. And you, and I'm, I just want to be very careful moving into some potential pitfalls, because I know how much the kids enjoy being in school and I'd like to see it continue with a gradual increase as data comes in.
We haven't formally announced.
Some, some research that's out there that parents are citing about that schools are not super spreader organizations, and that's true and we're following that science. Many, many schools across the Commonwealth have opened. We haven't seen a dramatic spike, but that does not mean that there is no such thing as school-based transmission. And we do know that that's happened and there's schools across Massachusetts that, as you have said, are now in remote because of cases. And so not being a super spreader doesn't mean that you're, that it's risk-free. So I just want to clarify that.
We haven't formally announced, I, I know KP just did, where they've, they've said they're gonna be hybrid for the remainder of the year. Sorry if I'm stealing something out there, sorry. But we haven't actually said that, I mean, I, I think we all can figure that is going to be the case. I can't imagine the circumstance where that's not the case.
Right. What I've said to the public is unless, unless there's a dramatic change in the research and the availability of a vaccine or a treatment, our physical conditions don't change. We can't make the buildings bigger, we can't, unless the guidelines change, we can't get more kids on a bus. You know, we worked really collaboratively all summer with our teachers. They've been fabulous about putting safety things in place, coming back. The sub issue is an issue we've been recruiting aggressively. We had an open house the other day for new subs. But we also have to make sure that the conditions are comfortable and safe for everybody that's working in the schools as well.
These are the people who are with our children, the staff that are with our children six to, you know, seven hours a day. They have a huge influence. I personally would rather have my child be with someone who is.
Comfortable.
Comfortable and has a smile on their face as best as they can than a downtrodden, even if we may feel it on the inside, I get it.
Yeah.
We need everybody to feel.
And we all want our kids back.
We all do. We all want to open the doors and let everybody in. It would make our jobs 1,000 times easier.
The teachers want all the kids back. We all want to send our kids back, you know, I mean, there's no, there's no one here who's like, oh, this is awesome.
Nobody's loving this new life.
Nobody.
2020 is the best year ever.
It's what, it's what the circumstances require and it's the best choice for all of the.
For everybody to feel safe and.
Interlocking groups of people.
Yeah. Good about your job and excited, you know, but.
And I think that the Massachusetts Superintendent's Association put out a public response today to the governor's statement on. And, and really, I think we're all in the same boat. I know all the superintendents in the region that I was on the call with. Until there's medical consensus around the safe social distancing, we have to go with the conservative safe standard. It's what we've all negotiated in good faith and it's hard to say, all right, let's go down to three feet when we don't have clear consensus that that's a safe distance. I know that.
Or even a workable distance.
Add anything? I know that teachers have heard all the conversation at the state level or have we covered it or?
I just want to say that the Norfolk Teachers Association completely agrees with everything that Dr. Alardi said here today and that we are not in favor of a full return at this time.
Yeah. But we are watching it and, and things are changing and, you know, like I think you said, we all have the same goal. We'd all love, our teachers are working so hard to plan for two cohorts. I, I was walking around the other day and I have more people saying, I feel like I'm a first-year teacher after 20 years of teaching, because everything's new and they're planning really for two groups. They're planning for the cohort that's at home, they're, they're really putting time into that. So in terms of ease, it would be much easier to bring everybody back. We just don't feel it's safe and, and we don't feel that, that it would be an appropriate choice, especially when the state is seeing such a spike, so. That's where we are with that. I'm happy to answer any questions people might have on that.
I, I have one thought, one question, going back to, I, I've received a number of questions about, and I know you've said the research is there, the live streaming.
Yes.
Is there anything that we can point people to that shows the research? Because a number of people have asked, why aren't we doing that? Other districts are doing it.
Yeah, you know what I think it is and, and we'll put something together. I did share out the research, it's in our, in our reopening report, the link to the research on, on live streaming. What I think people are confused about is what they're really asking for. So that's why I was trying to clarify the definition between live streaming and live instruction. The only districts I'm aware that are doing live streaming is more at the high school and middle school level.
For the lower grades.
Where kids could watch a lesson and, and not, and be able to process more of what's happening and going on without that level of engagement. Districts that are doing live instruction, that's very different because it's designed to be delivered in that platform. So just like a Google Meet, you can see your students, they can submit questions, they can interact in a different way. We are in support of that and that's what we're looking at for some of those remote days. We are not looking at just broadcasting what's happening.
No, and I agree, I don't think that's appropriate.
So I think when parents are asking, what a lot of other districts are doing are, is that live instruction. So I think they're just mixing up terms, but their research is in the reopening report.
Okay, great, I'm gonna look for that just because a few people asked, so I'm like, all right.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've gotten that same question and I, I think you're right, I'm glad you made the point. I think they sort of know what they want without actually knowing the actual wording for it and that's what they want. So I think what you're describing would, if, if that could come to fruition, I think would be ideal.
We are working, like I said, at, at the upper grades, teachers are interested in We are working, like I said, at the upper grades. Teachers are interested in doing that. We know it's more successful, and then we're looking at what would that look like and what would be meaningful for the kids at the upper grades.
And maybe the teachers would be interested in speaking with other teachers in other districts, because things are going smoother, in my opinion, Franklin, doing the live instruction where they're in and whatever. And it's different, just so.
It would reduce planning demands, for sure. But we want to do it right, so we want to test it out. We want to see how kids respond to it. Our teachers are experts at this. They'll be able to say, you know, student engagement is good. This seems to lead to better learning. So we want to try it out and find out what's the best way to approach it and what works best, and then we will come back with some recommendations for changes to our model.
When... What's the timeframe for that, or you think... General, I won't hold you.
In general, I think that we are looking at that transition of more students coming back to full in person over the next two weeks. We'll be meeting with teachers and talking about the survey results and gathering their feedback and suggestions over the next two weeks. And I would say in December, we'll start piloting some changes. I don't think we'll make formal modifications or changes to the plan until January, until we have a really good feedback on how kids are responding to that.
And that's a natural break anyway, coming back from the holidays.
And it's the end of the term, right? I mean, like you'll be... You'll have one model for one term and then move into something else.
And we'll be able to... We don't want to modify a plan and then find out, "Oh, this actually doesn't work well." So we want to do it thoughtfully and gather more data.
Okay. The last thing I have for you is a COVID update. So this is going to respond to your question that we're getting from parents about notice. So I won't go into the details of this because it's in the plan, and we've reviewed it before. So all of our protocols are in place for responding to COVID, whether it's a student presenting with symptoms during the day or if we get notice from a parent after school hours that a child's potentially been exposed. There are significant restrictions on what we are allowed to share with the public per HIPAA laws. However, our plan and our protocol is in place. If a child tests positive and has been in school during a period of time they were infectious, then we will... The first thing we do is contact tracing, identify anybody who was a close contact of that child. Those people get a direct phone call from our school nurse, who informs them they're a close contact, and walks through the steps of what they need to do for testing and quarantine. They also get a follow-up confirmation letter that explains what it means to be a close contact and what you need to do. We would also send a letter out to the entire class that the child tested positive in, and it would say they're a member of our school community, because we cannot identify whether it's a student or a staff member, but a member of the community has tested positive for COVID-19 that has been involved with your child's class. We're letting you know your child is not a close contact, but we're making you aware of the situation. These are the symptoms to look for. A letter also goes to the whole school that's impacted.
Sorry, I didn't... I was just trying to think. When you said send a letter, is it an email or actually a...
It's an email letter.
Okay, I was going to say, because otherwise you lose two days. I just wanted to make sure that's not...
Yeah, no. It's an email letter. And so then, one letter would go to the whole school committee that just would say we have a positive case of COVID in our schools, just letting you know. It would go to the impacted school. So it's a need-to-know in terms of those HIPAA standards. If a child tests positive and has not been in school while infectious, you know, if a child's exposed to COVID and tests positive, and they have... Because of our hybrid model, some kids haven't been in school since Tuesday. If they're exposed on Wednesday or Thursday and test positive Saturday, there is no school transmission. There's no school exposure. In that case, we cannot send a letter out informing you of that. What we are doing that I think will help parents, we are going to be adding to our website a district COVID dashboard. On that dashboard, there'll be a link to the mass.gov site that will give you community transmission rate and data for the state as well as Norfolk. And we will also have a dashboard for school-based cases by building. So it will say the number of cases at the H L of Day over the last 14 days, number of cumulative cases, and that data will be updated weekly. So parents, if you want information about school-based transmission, you can look at the district-level dashboard by building. But we can't send a formal notice out if there's no school exposure.
Right, or if it's over the holiday break or something, yeah.
Exactly.
That's fair. I like the dashboard. It's like what the colleges do.
Yep. And so it'll be available. We'll update it weekly. Any parents that want that information, again, we're reporting by building. We're not identifying students or staff. It'll be the number of cases in the last 14 days, just like the state report. Our fabulous tech team worked on that. I vetted it with Mark Pezy, who's one of our tech staff today, so it's ready to go. I think it'll be out by Monday, and you'll be able to log in at any point and see where we are in the district, where we are in the state. And he put a picture of Norfolk, and it'll be colored based on the state code. So it's red today, but hopefully it'll be green soon.
So for those of us that just like to take a high-level glance...
If you just want a quick look, the color of the town, and you'll know. The other thing is the state is going to change the way they're reporting state data. And they are going to be... Well, in a positive way. They're going to be pulling out of the community data cases that are in major organizations like prisons or nursing homes, so that you can see what the community data looks like versus the prison data.
Because it used to be they would give us an asterisk, right? I know they've stopped doing that, but then they're going to separate it.
They're going to break it down further, is my understanding from the governor, because otherwise, people see 84 new cases, and they're panicked. I got a lot of calls and emails over the weekend, and that is primarily isolated at the prison. So they are going to be pulling out that data from prisons, nursing homes, hospitals that are in towns.
Do you know, do any of the schools that do this with a similar dashboard, are they all doing a weekly type scenario?
For the most part, people are. A lot of times when we have a student that is potentially positive, it takes three to four days before we even get a result.
Okay.
So I think weekly is probably the best way to update it.
Okay, that's the best approach, and okay.
Is there going to be something that says, like, "Updated on the state" or something?
Yes, and what we're going to do, I think I'm going to follow the state. The state is updating the dashboard for the town every Thursday, so we will update ours on Thursday. So people won't have to look back at two different dates. The current data will be every Thursday. Yep.
Awesome.
It's a good idea.
So that's our plan. I attached, just in case you were interested, copies of the letters that we send for all three scenarios. We have not had to send any letters out. We have not had any cases of students or staff members that were positive or infectious while in school.
Is there any discussion about maybe doing a text alert? To be like, "Hey, check your email," because I don't check my email every day. But my phone is always like...
I think we would run into HIPAA issues with that.
Or just make sure that the email has a big, in capital letters, "This is not about your special schedule."
When we're notifying close contacts, when we notify close contacts, there's a call that goes first. So they get the call, and the letter is a follow-up.
The technology fatigue is real.
Yeah.
They want to do something.
I get that, for sure.
Closing your email is like the virtual equivalent of just like pulling a blanket over your head. Like I open it up, and then maybe...
Nope.
You can't do it anymore.
That's all I have for tonight.
All right. Moving on to King Philip. Sorry, I stole part of it, so, sorry.
All right, so we won't go over that. Survey did go out to parents, asking about their Thanksgiving holiday plans. We are considering what to do the Monday and Tuesday after the break, whether to be remote for that time, to give people time to, you know, figure out if they have symptoms or not, do testing, stuff like that. The other side, the argument from some people was that that might make people extend their holiday break, and they'd still just be coming back. So they're on the fence about that. We're going to talk about that the next meeting. FY22 budget planning has begun. We got our schedule of budget meetings, and that's all scary, and not my problem.
It is going to be scary this year.
Yeah. Some great news. KP was ranked in the U.S. News for High Schools, 75th in the state, which was awesome.
That's great.
And they are in the U.S., they came up, I think Mr. Zini said, at least 50 spots higher they ranked. So that was great news.
Very good.
One big thing for our next meeting coming up, we had a first reading of the policy review for personnel, so we're going to be reviewing that again and voting on it next meeting, I believe. Rentham talked about their survey that they sent out to parents and teachers, and there were two things that really struck me. They did a Teachers Pay Teachers subscription. I don't know if you've heard of Teachers Pay Teachers. Yeah. They did that just so that there was another resource for teachers. Instead of reinventing the wheel, that they could just go there and get some resources. Another thing they're doing is they're having technology office hours for parents, which was awesome. I know. So if a parent's really struggling, there was a time where they could meet with the IT people and have a one-on-one.
This is Rentham that's doing this?
Yes.
That's very nice.
So I thought that was a really great idea. But, yeah.
Okay. We looked over the harassment policy, and we were recommending that we split it into two separate policies, a general harassment policy and a sexual harassment policy. Council had recommended that to us because the sexual harassment is so broad. It's just so...
There's a lot of additional protections.
There's a lot of information. I was blanking on what to call it. And they're anticipating possibly it could potentially be changed over the next few months. There could be some changes. So we're recommending as a subcommittee to hold off on the sexual harassment policy right now. But we did review the general policy, which was given to us by council, and it includes all protected classes. And we are bringing it forth for a first reading tonight, or in December, sorry. December will be brought forth, in December, for a first reading. So it's not part of it tonight. It will be brought forth. We just looked... We just decided to break it up into two. I can see Thomas. Wheels are turning.
You don't have to do anything.
No, I was reading.
He's on to the next... He's on to the next one. We do have three policies for vote consideration tonight.
Okay, and that's it.
So we had three policies for tonight. One is just to vote on the immunization of students, and it just updates and includes the required flu vaccine per the COVID pandemic update. So it's an incidental change, so we're bringing that forward. Policy hasn't changed other than to include the immunization requirements for the pandemic.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept policy JLCB immunization of students?
I move to accept policy JLCB immunization of students.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
This is the time.
This is discussion time. It's just a logistical question. For parents who already did the initial round of send all your stuff to the schools to get your child enrolled in the schools, who now have a piece of paper saying we have this extra immunization, who do we send that to?
The nurse, school nurse. And if she doesn't have it, they will call you. They're tracking them, but yeah, you do need to send it to the nurse.
Ingrid's home address. She's taking it.
I'm just going to give it to you, and that will be out of my head. Here, you take it.
Then we had second readings on a remote learning plan that just...
Did we vote on this, though?
We didn't. That was my discussion.
That's... I was going to... He's too... It's like, wait, we didn't vote, did we? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And now we...
We had second readings on the remote learning policy and addendum. And this, again, just the pandemic is the first time schools have ever had to consider transitioning to remote. So based on what we've learned from that, this just talks about when a remote learning plan might need to be put in place. We didn't have any changes from the first reading. I don't know if anybody has any additional modifications or changes they wanted to make tonight. If not, it'll come for a third reading and a vote next meeting. We have to that.
All right. So moving on... Sorry, if I've got to pull the mask down, or else my glasses steam up, and then I can't read, and then it gets awkward, so bear with me here. All right, so we have a number of school partner renewals, two. One is NCL. Let me just put that little thing on here. So I think everybody's fairly familiar what they do. But in short, do a lot of things, bring the community together through various fundraisers, fostering of town spirit. Primary initiative is fundraising in order to raise vital funds, disperse back to the community through our annual community assistance grant process. In 2015, NCL dispersed 31,000, for example, back to local organizations, programs, and educational needs. So they do a number of very, very good things and have done so for a number of years here. So do we have a motion to renew NCL as a school partner?
I'll make a motion to renew NCL as a school partner.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, NCL.
And then our friends at CPAC, who did a presentation for us just a couple of meetings ago. They also would be renewing or looking to renew their partnership. And as we have noted, they have, in particular, the last few years, have really done an outstanding job as far as how active they've become and how helpful they've become. Excellent organization, one I think... So all these are no brainers, but this definitely is a no-brainer. So do we have a motion to accept or renew the partnership of CPAC?
I move to renew the partnership of CPAC.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Thank you, CPAC.
Wait, not yet. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now Jen, win.
Loved trunk or treat. Had a great time.
All right, so then we need a motion to accept the meeting minutes from our October... It says 10th on here, and it says 13th on the exhibit. I don't know the date, so you have to...
I think it was the 13th.
I think it was the 13th as well.
Okay, so we're going to go with the 13th. So do we have a motion to accept the minutes from our October 13th meeting?
I move to accept the notes from our school committee meeting on Tuesday, October 13th.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you. And then we're looking at December 8th. How does that look for everybody?
One of 2020.
That's not conferences, is it? It's not the week of conferences.
Tom, off the top of your head, know if that's conference week?
That's a Tuesday.
It is.
That's a conference day.
Could we move that back, meeting back to the 15th? I think that would be better, because we'd have more information to update the committee on any changes to the plan, and that would, you know, be easier for parents with conferences.
It sure would.
Okay, so 15th. Does that work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
In person here?
Pardon me?
In person here.
Yes. Barring they change, but as of right now, that's the plan.
Barring full widespread vaccination, and then we'll just move it back.
Seems a little unlikely, but okay.
Positive person, so.
Okay, that's good for you. Finally, before Midora keeps going.